I think you have to sign up somewhere in.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a workshop meeting at the City Council's Satellite Beach, November 7th, 2018, at 6:50 PM. And the reason for this workshop is to interview a board applicant. At this time, Brent Wenty, is that correct? Thank you. Brent just come up and Brent and I talked. I told him.
The process.
And Brent, just tell us a little bit about yourself and we'll go from there.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Brent Wenty. I'm a CPA and I've lived either in Satellite Beach or Melbourne Beach for the last 30 years. Twenty-five of that has been in Satellite Beach. Truthfully, I haven't really paid much attention to what goes on in the city government here because really haven't needed to. But now, I just feel like I have all experience that I've developed over my career that maybe I can be of service to the city.
Great. I see here that you put down first the Pension Planning Board for Police and Fire and then General. Is that the same position?
I think, I think the position that went out was, was for both boards.
Okay.
Generally, a pension trust fund meets on a Thursday at 2:00 PM and they meet quarterly. Occasionally, they will have a special meeting if something is coming up. And I've been the council liaison to that board for years. The, um, the city appoints, I believe, two people in all?
Yes.
The city appoints two people to that board and the boards themselves appoint the other members. So, um, the position that's available now is a city-appointed position, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And it's, it's for both boards.
For both. Is that okay with you on that?
They meet at the same time.
They meet at the same time. And generally, the Florida League of Cities will come and they have one of their individuals who they handle the minutes, they handle all of the stuff for the pension trust fund meetings. And what they will do is they will convene one meeting, do the official business, convene the other meeting, do their official business, and then the Florida League of Cities individual will give the presentation on what the investments are doing and all of that and go over that information. That's pretty much how the meeting goes. Generally, it's an hour, hour and 15 minutes at the most. So, is that sadly because you had them down here as one and two and they're together? Is that a?
Okay. I wasn't aware that they were the same, but.
Well, they're two different boards. Two different boards.
Two different boards.
It's one individual.
Okay. How many people are there at the meetings?
Um, there's generally five people that are on the board, I believe.
Okay.
For each, the police and fire have one board. And generally, the chairman is the chairman of both boards.
Okay.
So, they have the general employees. And the general employee plan is actually a closed plan. And we do have employees that have been with the city for an extended number of years. And those are the ones that are still left in the plan that are actively working. And then there are retirees that are still in that plan.
Okay.
The police and fire plans are stipulated under Florida statute 175, 185. So, those are active plans. New employees come into either police or fire, go into one of those two plans. Any questions?
I have no questions.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Wenty, thank you for volunteering. We'll see if we can make use of you. Glad you're here.
Thank you for volunteering. It's your civic duty.
Time-wise, you can make fit your schedule?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. And again, like I explained before, we, um, it's an agenda item. So, you're more than welcome to stay or we'll get a hold of you tomorrow. Okay? Thank you. Any further questions?
I just, one other thing. There are educational opportunities available to you that the board pays you to go to. The League of Cities has training programs just to kind of get you up to speed on what's going on. I, you'd have to check with, um, when those are available, but they're, they're there. So, I would encourage you to look at those also.
Okay. Any further? Here are none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we close that meeting. We'll start the council.
Let's get this party started.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council, Satellite Beach, November 7th, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Breimer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
The one that stands for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and our people, with the routine of justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, and this will be a presentation of a proclamation recognizing November 11th as Veterans' Day.
Thank you, Mayor. The official proclamation to see Satellite Beach, whereas November 11th is dedicated to extraordinary Americans who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. On this day, we come together to pay tribute to America's sons and daughters for their service and their sacrifice. And whereas our veterans have preserved our way of life with unwavering patriotism and quiet courage, they charge into harm's way, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice to protect the freedoms that have blessed America. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our country and communities from coast to coast as public servants, as mentors, parents, and community leaders, they have added proud chapters to the history of America. And whereas our actions must strengthen the bond between our nation and our warriors, protected our freedom in the years past and have protected today. And whereas, with respect and recognition of the contributions of our servicemen and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, we must fulfill our sacred trust and care for our veterans. And whereas Congress has approved a request that we observe November 11th as Veterans' Day and a Day of National Service and Remembrance. Now, there, before on behalf of Frank P. Contino, Mayor of Satellite Beach, for our kind of Florida, do hereby claim November 11th, 2018 as Veterans' Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. I encourage our community to join together, to recognize the battle or sacrifice of our veterans through ceremonies and prayers, and to pay tribute to the many heroes who protect and defend our great nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Steve. Move on to Agenda Item 4, Citizens' Comments. I'll take Citizens of Satellite Beach first. For non-agenda items.
Hey there. Linda Palmisano, 509 West Amherst Circle. I've spoken before, the council before, about the work I'm doing to try to get fluoridation, fluoride products taken out of the Melbourne city water. And on October 23rd, we actually had an official agenda item with the City of Melbourne City Council. It was requested by Councilwoman Teresa Lopez, and she gave a presentation herself. And then it was open for Citizen Comments. And I have a DVD of the whole meeting. The Agenda Item Number 14 was the Agenda Item on fluoridation. It starts at minute 57. It goes for quite a while, 40 or 50 minutes. It was a good, it was a good talk between everyone. I think they probably tabled it till after the first of the year unless something changes. And there are some, some changes to the Melbourne City Council based on the voting last night. Teresa Lopez did not win reelection and Betty Moore didn't win reelection either. So, there'll be some new opportunities to educate some new council members there. But I wanted to donate this to the City of Satellite Beach. And if you would, if you have an opportunity, look at it. It's something I'll, I'll be back for. Betty Moore had suggested that she would like to see more input from the cities other than Melbourne that are serviced by the City of Melbourne Water. So, I'm hoping to start meeting with Indian Harbour Beach, Indian Atlantic, Melbourne Beach, Palm Shores, their city leaders and give them some information. Two of my concerns about fluoridation. But anyway, can I give this to the?
Please give it to the.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda, I think they were also talking about West Melbourne because they sell water to West Melbourne. So, I would focus on West Melbourne.
Okay.
And we'll end it with them. Okay?
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you. Okay, for non-agenda items.
Kathy Marler, Harwood Avenue. So, I started to help Linda in her quest for fluoride. So, I have not done, I was not part of the Melbourne City Council meeting. However, today I learned something. And hopefully you all can see this. Okay, so, it starts in 1945. Fluoride looked like this. Around the year 2000, they changed. Fluoride now looks like this. It is not the same chemical at all. So, as you can see, especially down in how all the molecules and everything come together. I know we're doing science and chemistry, but you can definitely see that they are not the same. So, you then question, okay, so, why would we care about that, that they aren't the same? Now, I'm going to be doing other presentations. This was just very quickly because I, I thought maybe your questions would be, you know, why do we care? If it's fluoride, it's fluoride, but it's not really fluoride as we knew it in the early times. Oh, and with her presentation, we were working on answering all the questions that were proposed. And what I'm asking here is that I have the help of the city manager or a council member, whoever, to help Linda and I go through and find home that document to be the correct wording. Okay, so now, let's go back to why do we care that there's a different chemical compound? And this is just one example. Okay, so this is the City of Melbourne water. And they have different test, testing points throughout your system. This just happens to be TTHNs, which is a byproduct of cleansing our water. So, if you look here, this is malium. All of these are cancerous chemicals, harmful chemicals. So, if you look malium here, by the time it gets over to us, east side, there's a significant difference. I've been working on this for probably like four months on different, various aspects of our drinking water. And I've worked with Ralph. He's provided me some of this data. But I would like help in getting the fluoride because I'm not even sure if we take out this fake fluoride, how much of this other stuff is going to be resolved.
Thank you.
Ralph is the utility director for the City of Melbourne.
I don't figure that. Yeah.
Didn't hear that.
We said, thank you.
Ralph is the utility director for the City of Melbourne.
Is anyone else listening to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can pass. You show them that. Any other?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is for non-agenda items. Hold on one second. Okay, let me just finish this. On that request, um, you work it out and talk. I have, I have my thing to her right now. Who's, I love stuff that's science-based. Who's the scientist in the group? Who has a PhD in this stuff? If not, I mean, we need, if we're going to go to the City of Melbourne with something, we need to have scientific information, facts on this to present to it. Because you know as well as I do, if you go up there and you're not prepared, you get shot down pretty quick and then no one believes anything you say after that. So, you know, I'm not a scientist. I don't know anybody on this council who is. So, you know, if we go that way, then we need to be, make sure that it's ver, it's legitimate thing. Because I hear, you know, we all hear it from both sides.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Roger Good is Satellite Beach. I agree with you on that. We do need scientific information and the people are starting here. And I think the presentation there makes sense that they're making us all aware. And I'm going to cut it short here that, to say that there's still a lead issue out there. And I want to go back to, we were promised results on the smoke tests as far as what was happening in the past for the sewer system. To this date, we have not received any information as individual residents in regards to the smoke test to ensure that the wastewater system is sealed and/or in quite good repair. And I'm going to jump to another issue here. I know we had red tide here and I thank the city for making this happen. All the fish were removed from the beach and so far, we're fortunate here. There were a lot of volunteers. I'm not going to get into the fact that certain volunteers didn't have the right equipment or whatnot, but I'm going to tell you as a person living on the beach, I'm still suffering respiratory consequences of it, but I'm not going to hold the city responsible for that. What I do want to bring up is, though, that voting was moved and it was a quick decision to the city library or the county library where it's located. And I know all the fish were collected there and I was dumbfounded about it that on the first day of election and the second day of election, there was a heavy scent there. And it was close to the area of the ponds. But then I go further here and I have documentation. In regards to the gopher turtles, I am very concerned about the gopher turtles and resiliency there when I found out the last meeting that we had here that the ponds were interconnected. And I understand that. I will accept that, even though it was too late to be brought up. But the issue I bring up is this. We talk about resiliency and clean environment. And I'm not one of those persons who espouses that he is such a person. However, I do understand the conflict and I've always been a proponent of it. But I don't espouse myself as being somebody like that. And I don't brag about it. The issue that I have is the vacuum truck was out there one day last week. And they were dumping, wherever they collected this sludge, but they were dumping it over there not far from the library in an area. They were expunging the truck of excrement. What kind it is, I don't know. I didn't have time to contact the city. I'm, I'm very busy, but I have a problem understanding that since I've been in the water and wastewater business on a regulatory side, I think that could be done better. I don't believe in it being buried. And I understand that there is sediment there and it leaches into the ground. If we need a sludge drying bed to ensure that this does not compromise our ground, then I suggest you, Mr. Mayor, and administrative staff work on this to make sure that we do not compromise our land. Because we talk about irrigation water and whatnot. If we're going to use the old BARRY system that is out there, things can be done better. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Podium's still open for non-agenda items.
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street. Wow, what a day yesterday. Oh, my God. I had the opportunity to meet some of the most incredible citizens of this community that actually know what's going on. And I thank you for the website because they're able to go there and get the information. And we are on YouTube tonight, Lenore?
Yes.
Okay. The YouTube videos, they're watching them. They may not all want to come here, but I'm encouraging these incredible citizens that I met during the election cycle that know what's going on and they need to come to these meetings whenever they can to see how this all works. But we have some really intelligent citizens in this community. And I had the opportunity to meet them yesterday and during the whole week of early voting. So, I think it was great, okay? The turnout was great. We had a great turnout yesterday in this precinct, 405. We had a great turnout in the library. We broke a bunch of numbers and it was fantastic. And I'm very happy for the state of Florida today. It's a great day for the state of Florida and it's also a great day for the entire country in various areas. And thank you, President Trump, for doing what you've done.
Podium's still open for public comment on non-agenda items. Here are no further. Back to council. At this time, move on to Agenda Item 5, Citizens' Com, uh, Council Comments.
Attended the Founder's Day Parade and I just want to say to Cassie, as I've already said once, nice job with you and your team and Courtney, everybody from the city side that participated. It was a good turnout and everything seemed to go real well. So, thanks again for your usual efforts. The other thing is, is I wanted to follow up with on council is you guys kind of tasked me to, to work with Alan and see if we could come up with some fitness opportunities down there at the park. So, I've been working on that with him. I sent him a whole lot of stuff, a lot more stuff than he ever wanted to be sent, and gave him a lot of contacts. But the biggest thing was looking for the criteria, making sure it doesn't rust away or just turn to powder in about two years. So, Alan's on all that stuff. I also contacted Port Charlotte and they were very receptive to sending me information about who they'd used and that sort of thing. So, I'll leave the rest of it for Alan to talk about, but we're, we're on it, council. So, okay? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll go just because doing it down the line. Thank you for Founder's Day. Everybody that worked very, very hard. It was great. Great turnout. One of the first years, I remember that we had Principal of Satellite, Anne Delora, walking with us. So, the schools are very much connecting to our community. And that was great to see. I had the privilege to go on firefighting training with Eric Rose. And I know while you've done it, if you haven't done it, you need to do it. It's, it's pretty amazing. It, it was amazing what these guys do, how fast they have to do it and decisions you got to make and know how to do it. And so, I just want to thank them. It was a great eye-opener and it was a great day with them. These guys are really good. I can tell you that. That's it. Done.
Yeah, Courtney and I did that a couple of years ago. I think our dummy died.
He didn't make it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't carry him out, right? His head bounced off the cement a few times, but.
Founder's Day. I heard more people telling me it was the best Founder's Day, the best parade. It was just a wonderful day. Thank you for all you guys did and staff. I also want to congratulate Jody Rezeki, who is our new council member as officially of it yesterday. You're not sworn in yet, but I'm officially welcoming you. I attended a function last night for Kurt Smith. Kurt's our county commissioner. He represents our district. He's done a great job working with us here in Satellite Beach. So, you know, I went up there to make sure I thanked him for all he does for us. And the last thing I want to talk about is Amendment 1. I'm thrilled that Amendment 1 failed because it really was not a tax savings for anybody. It was a tax switch. And residents in the state of Florida were able to understand it. It was the only amendment that didn't pass. So, that was huge for us because, you know, I look at our millage rate and I'm hoping that as we start looking at it going forward, we're going to be going back down on it. Because we purposely went up on our millage rate anticipating that Amendment 1 was going to pass. And this is going to be a great way for us to put some money in reserves this year with where we are and then look at different numbers for next year. That's all I have.
Founder's Day, of course, as a whole, very awesome. We got to talk to those ROTC kids though because they're young and fast. I think I almost got ran over by the fire truck a couple of times. I know I got hit by candy by a woman that was sitting in the back of the car because I kept slowing down. I'm actually just, it was, it was awesome. It was amazing. It was packed. I did the sustainability booth for a little bit and the amount of interaction that we had with that booth just itself was, was pretty impressive because I've done them in the past. I did it last year and it was, you know, people would walk by and weren't very interested. So, Nick did a really good job designing and setting up, he had like a little wheel type of thing. On the 30th, I went to, I'm going to try to say this right. I went to the, um, Chabad. Okay. So, it's, I went to the Jewish temple at the end of Roosevelt. They held the Shabbat. Well, apparently it's Chabad. Chabad. So, I went then. They held a candlelight vigil for the massacre that had happened in Pittsburgh. And I attended that. It was my first experience in, in any kind of a Jewish ceremony or anything. And I thought it was quite beautiful, to be completely honest. They sang hymn, I guess not a hymn, is it a hymn? It was very pretty. The rabbi was very sympathetic and he spoke very well. I thought he was very well-spoken. Sheriff Wayne Ivy was there as well and he lit a candle and I just kind of hovered in the background. But I know that we don't see a lot of that in the community and it would be something that would be nice. It's kind of try to, it's what I tried to explain to the rabbis. I would like to extend our condolences. On the, that was on the 30th. And on November 1st, I was invited to a panel for the Girls Up Club or Girl Up Club. And that's at the Heritage High School in Palm Bay, which I don't know if any of you guys have ever been out there. Six-inch heels and parking in the parking lot thinking you know where you're going as you're walking and walking. It's, it's massive. Where basically it was a club full of high school girls and boys. It wasn't just specific to the one gender. And they just asked simple questions about just being a female in an elected position and my thoughts. And it was, it was pretty interesting. It was very fun trying to talk to teenage kids and try not to get the eye rolling and all of that. But I, I was very impressed with the fact that they even had a club and were trying to engage people into local politics, politics in general. I'll stop there. Everybody's, anyways, that's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Okay. Thank you, council. Moving on to City's Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The police athletic team will be hosting Operation Ziplock to create personal hygiene bags for people in need. And donations for this project can be left at the David R. Schechter Center in the main lobby. The City of Satellite Beach Relay for Life is hosting a bingo game at Whiskey Beach Pub on Friday, November 9th. Games will begin at 5:30 and all the money that's collected will benefit the American Cancer Society. And we will also be hosting a car wash at the fire department on Saturday, November 17th from 10:00 to 1:00. And that is also to benefit the Relay for Life. I received a card from the family of Doris Flag thanking Melanie Drink and Eric Tippens for their caring of their mother. I also received an email from Stephen and Regina Friedman thanking the fire department staff for the information presented in the Matter of Balance workshop. And that's kind of a workshop they provide to, to residents about making sure, certain exercises and making sure you keep your balance and keep your house clear of trip hazards and things like that. I received an email from Kathleen A. expressing her appreciation for building Inspector Carl Bowman. And the staff has been receiving quite a bit of positive feedback on the golf cart registration process. And residents are making appointments for inspections as we speak. In fact, it's quite, it's very popular on Facebook that people are so excited that they're getting their golf carts. So, so that's a good, good feedback. We are getting reports that the red tide levels are decreasing dramatically. And I think if you go out there now, you probably won't notice any. And I did appropriately award our public works staff that ended up cleaning up those bags. I did, and we also sent a thank you to Sheriff Ivy for sending inmates. We gave him cupcakes. We sent him cupcakes.
Okay, crush.
Yeah. And if you know Sheriff Ivy, that's a very appropriate gift. So, with the help of the county inmates and public works, we were able to clear our. So with the help of the county inmates and public works, we were able to clear our beaches in a day, which was, which was great. I wanted to add some, quite a bit of agenda items. I did, not agenda items, but just items. I attended the Junior Sustainability Board this morning, and these kids are pretty, are pretty amazing. They're moving along with trying to get water, water bottle fountains with filters in their schools, and they're getting ready to launch sponsorship requests, and they'll be approaching businesses to get sponsors. And they're, they're running these meetings just like, you know, we run ours. It's great to see, it's really cute. So when they get that done, we'll bring them in and recognize them for that. Waste management will be closed on Veterans Day, so they will not be picking up on Veterans Day. So the next pickup for recycling and yard waste will be the next regular scheduled pickup on the 19th of November. I did put an announcement on Facebook for that. The, I sent, I gave you a copy of the Army Corps of Engineers noticed that they're taking comments on the possible staging area for the Mid-Reach Project, so you can see that that project's moving forward, and so that's pretty exciting. And then I wanted to let you know that our millage rate certification documents were approved and submitted correctly, and so we're, we're good there. I did give you a copy of the county-wide nitrogen reduction ordinance, which is an ordinance that they created regulating subject tanks. This ordinance does apply to all municipalities unless the municipalities opt out purposely. So it would apply to the Barrier Islands. We don't have any subject tanks, so then we don't, we require people to put in sewer, so it doesn't really affect us, but it is a good step from a county-wide looking perspective. And then I wanted to let you know that the, I'm getting some discussions or some input from the realtor community that they're losing, people are walking away from their deposits because of the fear of the water issue. So I am preparing a bulleted fact sheet for the Realtors Association that I'm going to let Jim review, but I figured I'd put my signature on that, so they know that it's an authoritative document, and give that to the Realtors Association, so they can give that to the realtor community and make sure that we keep those rumors to.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Excuse me. Please do not blurt it out there. Thank you.
You can move to the front, or you can get, because I'm talking pretty loudly in a microphone. So we got some comments from the realty community that they are losing deposits on homes, and I'm preparing a fact sheet that I'll have the city attorney review and hand to the Realtors Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, so that's, that's another issue. And then I wanted to let you know that the AC went out. You have one agenda item for City Hall, it also went out at the Civic Center. The Civic Center AC unit was only five years old, so that was a big surprise. We will have another agenda item for you later, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that that was coming down the line. Both of them were unbudgeted expenses, and both of them were about $20,000, so. And that's all, good news I have for you today.
Great, thank you. Questions for City Manager? Courtney, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Number Eight, Discuss Take Action on Disposal of City Vehicles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What I have for you tonight before you is the disposition of two, two vehicles. One, a 2009 Dodge Charger that has some issues with the steering column. The steering column would have to be replaced in the vehicle, which would be about $4,000 in repair. The vehicle is not worth $4,000. So I looked into salvaging the vehicle, and we could get $700 for it. So that's what I am recommending. The ATV that was donated to us by Satcom in 2011 was primarily used for beach patrol, and seven years of saltwater and sand, and, you know, it, you know, no matter how you try to keep them clean and wash them down and things like that, the electronic parts, the metal parts, they just give, they just go away. So we actually received a grant to get a new police ATV. That's in operation now. So we were going, the Honda, the 2001 Honda has just taken up space that we don't have, so I'd like to ask permission to scrap that. Both those, the revenues from both of those would go to the general fund.
Thank you. Questions, Tom?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale and disposition of the two vehicles in question.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Thank you. Further questions from council?
Just one quick question. Did you have a vehicle to replace that Charger, or was it just something that was just extra?
That was a pool car.
Okay.
And it's basically an extra car, but every vehicle that they have, they need, so at some point it will have to be replaced.
Okay, that's what my question was.
But they are getting some new vehicles this year, so it kind of helps a little bit that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before I open up for public? This time, open up Agenda Item Eight for public comment.
Ron Giugudas, Satellite Beach. I stated this a long time ago, and maybe this is something to look into. I know there's life expectancy on the beach. I'm well aware of it. And things rust. I just have one suggestion, even if it helps one year or two years, an investment in lithium grease. And that may prolong the battle, but it certainly would help in budgeting things in the future. Thank you.
Public comments still open?
There are all kinds of, there is pace, there is everything, and I think Mr. Alan Potter and I have had this discussion, and I know he's a busy man, and he can't handle, there's too much going on right now.
Voting still open for Agenda Item Eight, Citizens' Comments. Here are none, bring it back to council. Any further from council? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Move on to Agenda Number Nine, Discuss Take Action on Emergency Purchase Air Conditioners. Courtney, Alan?
The City Manager alluded to earlier, the, the air conditioner at City Hall went out on the October 29th, Monday. And it's not winter time. It's supposed to be winter time, it's supposed to be fall, but it's not. And it doesn't help that it's 89 degrees outside that in the air conditioner goes. So we had to replace it right away. Otherwise, we'd have to shut down operations here, because it's just, it would be, you know, unbearable. And Complete Air, who we, we use on a regular basis, were Johnny on the spot. They looked at it and said, the age of it, the coil was bad, and the compressor was very suspect, so if we spent the money to repair the coil, chances are the compressor would go within months. So the decision was made to move forward with the purchase of a, of a new one, a replacement, which does come with a 12-year parts and labor warranty, so we should be good to go for the next, hopefully the next 10, 12 years with the new, the new AC.
Great. Both of them completed?
Just the one right now, the Civic Center, I think we'll bring that to you later, but that is also in disrepair. That one was a surprise to us because of the age, but in order to replace the compressor in that, it would have been about $5,000 or more. So, and it has two compressors in it, basically two units, so the decision has been made to do that, but we're going to bring that to you at a later date.
Okay. Questions from council?
I'll make a motion to retroactively approve the replacement of the City Hall air conditioning by Complete Heat &amp; Air in the amount of $17,720, which includes the $3,456 for a 12-year functional parts and labor warranty.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. I just want to say, I talked to Complete Air and Heat and thanked them for.
Getting it, they had this up and running by 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
And we never had to close. It was great.
Yeah. Good working with them, and I went by and thanked them on that. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine.
Ron Giugudas, Satellite Beach. Of course, an air conditioner has to be replaced. It's unbearable. We all experience that sometimes when it happens, and it would not be functional. I'm glad the city brought up the fact that now there is being purchased a warranty, because I didn't quite read the agenda totally. I have limited time, but I think there should be a concern going forward for all the air conditioners to have a warranty for parts and so forth going forward. So I commend that decision being made. But I am a little concerned, and I started looking at it last night, when I got to see certain things. My problem was, we talk resiliency here. Is 13 SEER the maximum that we can get as far as commercial air conditioners? Because we have a 19th SEER for residential, and that saves a lot of money. And that's a proposal going forward to consider that you have an air conditioner that does meet higher standards to reduce electricity costs. And my 19th SEER has the dual compressors in there, and we have the warranty on it, but it's, it's just something to look forward to, because Satellite Beach is claiming resiliency, we need to look at that. That is something to definitely consider going forward. I don't know with the commercial ratings, and I know companies don't relevantly disclose it sometimes, you got to do a little more search, but that's all I'm asking for, is if there is that possibility, then staff and council should look at it. Thank you.
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street. I agree with what Ron just said, and going forward, since we have the Civic Center issue, and it's interesting, because I went there yesterday to vote, and I'm thinking, why are all these dehumidifiers there? So we had an AC problem, correct? Okay. Because in primary, we had a smell problem because of the construction that was going on during, in August, and a lot of the workers were having some issues with the fumes that were going on there. So what I did, and some other workers did, is we brought some, and the city brought in some fans, okay? We did, Lenore was nice enough to give us a fan, but I brought in my own personal fan to kind of get the air circulation, and that was in August, okay, when there was a lot of construction going on. So going forward, 13 SEER, I got 19. You know, you, as Ron said, resiliency, efficiency, okay, sustainability, we need to look at these things going forward, and I hope that when you make the decision on the Civic Center, that you look at this. And I could be wrong on this, and maybe some of you remember this. I thought we had some kind of chiller system, and maybe you can comment on that, because I remember, I don't know how many years ago, we did have to replace an air conditioning system at the Civic Center. I don't know how old it is right now, and they talked about a chiller system. And I, maybe things have changed, because we have solar up on the roof. I don't know if that has anything to do with the air conditioning system, but I would think the SEER level should be higher than 13 in order to get the most efficient system in there to save money for the taxpayers and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Voting still open? Here are none, bring it back to council. Alan?
The chiller is at the Schechter Center. The air conditioner was replaced during the Ara, with a block rant through Ara, which went from a water-to-air to an air-to-air system, which we had to document the savings annually, or actually monthly, for three years after we put that in. And we were saving on average about $300 a month in that building with the new lighting and the new air conditioning. So we know we're saving money. The SEER rating, I can look into, but I'm, I'm almost positive that on a commercial unit like that, in order to get a better SEER rating, you're going to pay, pay probably double what you're, what you're paying for a 13 SEER. But I can look into that if, you know, if we want to do that.
Any further comments?
I just have one.
And just the other thing was, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Okay.
Because it was still, just in mind, every air conditioner we buy, we buy extended warranties, so that if we have an issue, the reason we didn't have an, we didn't have an extended warranty on that unit was because it wasn't available to train it. Train does not have extended warranties past the original warranty. If they do, they're, they're way too expensive to afford, so that is the warranty issue.
The one question, so would we put theoretically, so whatever size unit is over at the Civic Center now, I've, I've been to a couple of things where it was packed pretty heavy in there, and it was definitely not cool, not like this, and, and I'm hot all the time, so definitely would like to see something go in there that would be more efficient, obviously, but also actually cool the, the place down, especially if we use the two spaces at one time, you have all that body heat, do you know what I mean? If we have, since we're using that one part, and then.
The City Manager mentioned that, too, and I think part of the issue there was, there was a governor on the thermostat.
Okay.
To keep it, because people like to go in there and, you know, you have different age groups in there, and some are really hot, some are really cold, so, you know, they, they play with the thermostat, and they go up there and start pressing buttons, and then, you know, the program is all gone. So we're going to look at that and see if there's a way that we can program it in such a way that we can turn it down when we need to, when we're having a function in there that has a lot of people, because like, you know, you said, it does get warm in there at times, and figure that out, because there is certainly plenty of air there. It's 15-ton unit, so there should be plenty of air to be able to push through there, you know, that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, because it was hot.
And just one more thing about the humidifiers, those were portable air conditioners in case the air wasn't, couldn't, because we still have one unit that's working over there, so the, in order to supplement that air, if it was getting warm in there for the, for the workers and the, and the voters, Cassie arranged for two portable air conditioners, and that's what those were over there, the humidifiers.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Alan. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Discuss Take Action on Fraternal Order of Police Contact.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so before you, we have the negotiation, results of negotiation that brings you a three-year, a new three-year contract. that brings you a three-year, a new three-year contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, our police union. Basic overview of some of those details, what we negotiated is that we have a, the compression pay plan that we actually talked about earlier in the summer that you all had approved that affected specific employees. That is included in here to pay those increases based on the rate study over a two-year period. It includes a 2% raise in this fiscal year, which was part of the budget that you all had approved for this fiscal year already. And then for 1920 and 2021, it includes a proposal for a 3% pay raise for the FOP members. However, there is an opener for the city to come back and discuss that based on financial concerns and considerations. So, we've got that in there as well. And the union agreed to continue to allow the city to take the 185 state funds and put those as contributions toward the city's pension.
Pension.
Thank you, the pension plan. So, and that's for all three years. So, that was a very important piece as well and we appreciated them working together with us on that. There are also some fairly minor, just terminology, language changes in here. Some are in here because we're complying with different federal laws, like laws related to maximum compensatory time and FMLA, you know, for medical leave and things like that. And we received notice that FOP voted unanimously to accept the contract as we had negotiated with them. And so, all the costs of this contract are already included in this year's budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I only have one question. Just for curiosity, you're going to kill me. Just for curiosity, what do they have to pay in dues? Because I saw that they have to turn in their, is that something you guys are privy to? I was just out of curiosity, you know?
I don't know. Pam Britney, do you know? Did you know that?
I was just, it was just curiosity.
Collected for them, but out of their paycheck.
Yeah, it gets collected out of their paycheck and we pay it in every month. Offhand, I don't know because each one is different. And I think the supplier just changed, but yeah, it's stated something like that.
It's not important. I was just curious if you knew off the top of your head for my own personal curiosity.
Other questions from council or anything?
I just wanted to comment that FOP, if you see them out, thank them for this. They really worked with us this year and really, you know, came to the table. And we're great partners, so, you know, the city really appreciates them a lot.
Thank you. What, other questions? Okay. This time, open up for public comment on agenda item 10. Here and none, bring it back to council. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the FOP contract for October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Staff, Suzanne, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 11, ordinance number 1160. Jim?
Ordinance number 1160, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Satellite Beach City Code, amending section 30-107 definitions by amending definitions for coastal construction control line, ocean bluff line, ocean bluff protection zone, principal structure, and adding definitions for coastal setback line, crest of dune, emergency, erosion, erosion adaptation, action area, EAA, imminent collapse, landward lowest enclosed area, perant lowest floor, modification NGVD, ocean front lot, 100-year storm, rigid coastal and shore protection structure, sandbag, seaward structure, substantial damage, substantial improvement, vulnerable structure, amending sections 30-415 RM3 residential mixed-use district, 30-415.5 RM4 multifamily residential zoning district, and section 30-416 C commercial district, provide for setbacks for lots east of A1A, amending section 30-510 accessory structures for internal consistency, deleting section 30-734 in its entirety, adding a division four to Article 7 resource protection entitled coastal construction control line standards and criteria and set forth those standards, amending section 30-423 nonconformity, amending section 30-205 Sub B Sub 1 powers and duties of Board of Adjustment, establishing the subject matters and conditions on which the Board may grant variances to the coastal construction control line setbacks, providing for severability, providing for appealed inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. That's the second reading and ordinance number 1160.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here on a second reading. And simply, I'm going to just cover the changes that council directed we made at the last meeting on first reading. On page six, in section 30-415, we added language in number D3B. And for some reason, I don't think it was underlined in the document, but that was added for properties located east of A1A, all of the portion of which are located on the dune. There is no minimum height requirement for any of the required plantings located on the dune. The second change was on page 13, under section 30-738D. This was language added by the attorney based on his conversations with one of the residence attorneys with Reproger. The third change is on page 15, actually, the next two changes are on page 15. The first one is in L. There was discussion about defenses and there were two sentences that were deleted from L that...
It's not on the same page. We're not on the same page. 15 in ours does not have an L.
In your packet?
He's giving you the legislative.
Yeah, I'm getting it going in the packet.
Okay.
Oh, okay, because we got a revised, we're looking at that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
Sorry. That's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, Al, I see it. All right. Okay, so 15? Perfect, yeah.
Just above section 30-739, you'll see L, fences on land adjacent. There were two sentences that there were comments made on that were deleted. The deleted sentences were those dealing with all offenses on lots by sector adjacent to the CCCL shall only be allowed to use water or leering products under the Department of Environmental Protection San Fencing. I just paraphrased that. They aren't showing them in your copy because they have been deleted. The other, the last change is also on page 15. And those were just some additions into the first paragraph. And what I'd like to do is read that into the record. The Board of Adjustment may consider granting a variance to the CCCL setback on lands to use for single-family, townhome, or duplex purposes on lots located east of A1A when the foundation, this is the new part, the foundation of the principal or accessory structure parentheses S, close parentheses is/r, damaged by catastrophic events such as hurricanes, storms, surge, sea level rise, or, and then two deleted words, other disasters, and added in similar natural event or cause, except erosion as well as any other casualty. That mirrors the language that Mr. Beetle put on page 13 in D under 30-738. So, those are the requested changes that came up of your discussion and discussion by the public and the requests. And so, it's before you go on to second reading.
Thank you very much. John, anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
Got your question.
Okay, please.
Are we approving the document that's in our packet?
Same information. It's just taking the legislative style out for our city code. So, it's the same information, just cleaned up.
What's on, my guest doesn't have L in it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's probably from some things from being reformed on.
Thank you. Any further question from council members this time? I'm going to say one thing. I know they've worked incredibly hard and I took a look at this and said, is what we're passing or what we're voting on better than what we have? And I've got to say, yes. And will you please put that down? Thank you. You're distracting. Thank you. If we do nothing, I think they're worth it. From what I've read, sat in the meetings, I think it's a lot better than the county's plan. It gives them more flexibility. And I think this is a good compromise. We've worked with a lot of the homeowners through this and I think what we get is something that is better for our citizens than we had. And thank you because I know we put in, you guys put a lot of time in it, so, thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Ron Girgoudis, Satellite Beach, obviously on the ocean. You, Mr. Mayor, have not worked with me or even Dale on this, nor have you been in touch with some of my neighbors. So, I find that a little disingenuous. The next item that I have here is, city council agenda items are posted usually on Fridays. And what I'm looking at here, and I have a screenshot of this, the packet is enclosed in the workshop meeting, but the regular meeting, it's not. Now intuitively, I could go and think about that. However, I would think that it should be posted, the packet should be also posted on the general meeting to ensure that citizens can see it clearly. And I'm putting that on record.
Please say, we're sticking to ordinance 1160.
That is 1160, but I'm bringing it in, sir. I'm bringing it in because 1160 doesn't appear on the agenda. It's in the workshop. Does that not have any relationship? How come I have to look at the agenda? I just see the agenda on the regular meeting, but I don't see the packet. And that's part of 1160. And I'm bringing it to point of clarification. Number one, I consider this discriminatory against us. You say that you have worked with everyone. I don't buy that. You've never combined to the Windler residents. Nobody has combined to Dirk. Nobody has combined to other residents there. So, and we are the most affected there. And to get this on a Friday night or Saturday, when you make sense of this, the change is in here. I shot this off to our attorney for 1159. And 1159 is related to 1160 and that's why I'm going to oppose this additionally for the record. And nothing is disclosed by the attorney that it's changing. I believe you have the right to do that. But there is a protest for 1159. I hope everyone is aware of that. And I'm going to go through a couple of additional points here. Since there are so many changes, we were at the meetings. We were at the meetings when things were done. This ordinance has changed differently. And I'm going to myself, now wait a second. If I have plans right now to build, I cannot build based on this ordinance, if I'm reading it correctly. I cannot build unless I have a 100-year event.
Sir, you need to start wrapping up that.
I will wrap it up, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And I'm disappointed. I am very disappointed. And I hear a rumor mill going out there. I hear a rumor mill that I'm not happy about and I'm not going to disclose it right now. And since there are so many changes here, that perhaps it should go back to the PAB board because there are substantial changes now.
Thank you, sir.
Additionally, have I heard the beep?
Yes, the beep went off, sir.
The beep went off.
So, thank you very much.
So, I can't say one more word.
No, sir, I'm not taking it. I gave it an extension.
You know, I thought we were Mayberry.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were Mayberry.
Thank you.
That was long espoused.
Thank you. Three minutes. Thank you. The podium's still open for citizens' comments. Sir, leave. I'm sorry, you're out.
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street. I live on the ocean. Here's the mouse and this is how it's going to affect my property.
Dale, please present it to us.
Beach streets, Shell streets, A1A, Park Avenue, okay? This is discriminatory. This is discriminatory, okay? All right? Maybe we need to talk about the Santa Clara issue. Maybe not, but this is a taking and I want the citizens to know out there. And there are a lot of citizens that do know about that because I spoke to some of these people yesterday when they were coming in to vote that we have litigation going on right now pertaining to 1159, which pertains to the comprehensive plan, which 1160 works with that. They're sisters, okay? They're sisters, all right? So, why are you doing this? Why are you taking away our property and also our market value? How would you, I'm going to say it to you again, Councilman Gibson. How would you like it if somebody came over and sliced up your property? You've seen these pictures, okay? I'm getting emotional about this because it's my property you're talking about. And my neighbors are emotional about it too. So, I think because of the changes that you've made, I think procedurally, it needs to go back to PAB and it needs to be brought before them. They're the ones that made the recommendation of five feet and then it turned into 15 feet at a city council meeting. Thank you.
And sir, knowing your position, whatever time you need, if it's more than three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Cliff Reproger. My business address is 1901 South Harbor City Boulevard, Suite 500. I'm an attorney with a law firm, Rossway Swann, and we represent Klaus and Bridget Gersh, residents at 1687 Highway A1A Satellite Beach, 32937. At the outset, I'll just say, I'll echo the mayor's comment. A lot of time and effort has gone into this draft. My clients are not standing before you in opposition to it. We recognize that staff has done a good job of putting the ordinance together. A lot of times gone into it and we appreciate the opportunity to work with staff on some of the language and some of the changes that were raised, that we did raise at the PAB meeting. That being said, we do have a couple of, and I do appreciate Mr. Beetle's efforts as well in forwarding at least some of the changed language last week. I didn't see it until, incorporated into the final draft until late last week and I didn't forward these comments to staff in advance. But these are more clarifications that we're asking for than they are objections. So, I don't want to get into a back and forth. I can leave it or I can just submit what our questions are and you can answer them if you like. But the first point, there's three points. One is with regard to the design standards, which is in 738D, the grandfathering provision that's added. It was in, it was on page 13 of 20 of the agenda package. So, I don't know if that's how it reflects for you right now. But in the language there, there was language that was added after first read that clarifies the grandfathering. There's two different components to it and if you'll indulge me to read it for a second, I can make my point. Says if the principal or accessory structures or any portion of such structures located on any lot extends seaward of the CCCL and one, sustains less than substantial damage due to catastrophic events such as erosion, sea level rise, storm surge, hurricanes, or similar natural event or cause and whose foundation is determined in the opinion of the building official to be undamaged or two, sustains any damage due to other casualty, not including in one above, the grandfather kicks in. Our question with regard to that is, and this is the same point that we had raised at PAB, was is the second component intended to, well, one, would that cover a fire where there was greater than substantial damage that the entire home was taken down? So, like a non-natural event, like a fire where there was greater than substantial damage or there was substantial damage, not less than substantial damage. damage, or there was substantial damage, not less than substantial damage? And two, does it apply to a wind event, like a tornado or something that's not erosion-based, where you've got greater than substantial damage? So, our question is whether grandfather would apply in either one of those scenarios. The second point is with regard to 3739, conditions of the variance. The section, as it reads right now, reads, "The Board of Adjustment may consider granting a variance to the CCCL setback on lands used for single-family townhome or duplex purposes on lots located east of A-1A when the foundation of the principal or accessory structures is or damaged by catastrophic events such as hurricane, storm surge, sea level rise, or similar natural event or cause, except erosion, as well as any other casualty." There was not a requirement at the PAB meeting, the language that was in front of the PAB meeting did not, it only read under 739, it read, "The Board of Adjustment may consider granting a variance to the CCCL setback on lands used for single-family townhome or duplex purposes on lots located east of A-1A. The following conditions may apply." It did not have those conditions that there were damage, that there was damage before asking for a variance. So, I assume based on the fact that the language is there, that the city is requiring that as part of the variance component, and we're just kind of asking for clarification as to whether you have to have a casualty to ask for a variance, or whether a variance can be asked, or can be requested or applied for if you don't have substantial damage or a casualty. And then the final point was with regard to 739 for variances, that's on page 16 of 20 of the agenda package. Right now, it provides where there's a variance for the lowest floor elevation to be at a minimum of 10 feet above the base floor elevation. My clients believe that the height would be more appropriate if it was set at three feet, which is consistent with what you have in, for new construction in, I believe it's under 3738G, which is on page 13 of 20 of your agenda package. That's under design standards for new construction, so for new construction that's set at three. For variances, it's set at 10. I know that staff has a rationale for why they believe that it should be set at 10, but my clients are suggesting that it should be three to match what is provided in the other section. Because my client's assertion is, is that if you had a variance that was a minor variance, say a one-foot variance, that it wouldn't make a lot of sense to require that structure to be at 10 feet, and that you could have aesthetic problems and things that my clients are suggesting are not appropriate. And those are all the comments that we have. With that, I'll take your answers from the audience.
Jim, you want to, Rochelle, answer them, or you'll answer those questions?
I'd like for you to address the one on page 13, because that was one that you added. And then I'll state that the language on page 15 was made to match that language. That's why this was legally provided by the city attorney.
That's basically all I did, was just revise some of the language. So, I think it was just, one part talked about a disaster, one talked about a casualty, so it was just more or less fine-tuning the language is all that was in there. And then, as Rochelle indicated, the variance language is just changed to parrot what was changed in subparagraph D on page 13. That's basically what that was about.
Jim, the question that Mr. Repinger brought up about the possibility of a tornado, it says hurricanes or other similar natural events. I mean, would that not include a tornado?
I would say yes.
I mean, I would think that that's a pretty natural event, so that answered that one. You know, I look at the variance thing, and if, you know, we're doing a variance, and it says 10 feet, I mean, we're trying to get structures up. And if we're allowing our city to grant the variance, I would think that we would want to do what we're looking at ultimately doing, which is putting people out of harm's way with their property. So, why would we grant the variance and not have it at 10 feet? I would not support, if we're not going to stay at 10 feet, I can't. This is, the whole purpose of what we're trying to do is to allow people to rebuild on pieces of property that they're going to be able to insure, they're going to be able to live in, and we're providing additional setbacks that are going to allow them to go wider, closer to the street. We're giving more opportunities to these people to build safe homes. And I'm not going to vote for something that doesn't include these provisions.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I know it's hard for people who haven't been around that type of construction to visualize it and maybe, you know, like it. But in Cocoa Beach, there's two structures going up right now with 10-foot stilts, stilted buildings, and they're not even on the water. And it's because the owners that are constructing these buildings know that that's the best thing to do. And it's not a requirement of Cocoa Beach. It's not a, you know, the city didn't ask them to do that. The owners are doing that to protect themselves. So, I think you're going to see more of that type of construction in the future without us having to require it, because I think people are just going to do it out of concern for their own homes. So, I understand that it's hard to visualize when we're not around it all the time, but it's really just the way it is now for coastal communities to construct buildings like that.
Thank you. Further comments by citizens? Floor is open.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I would like to make two comments. One, my husband is a structural engineer and has been on Florida Task Force One in Miami-Dade for over 25 years. And after the last meeting, I spoke to him about the reading on 1160. And I asked him his professional opinion about, because he's been to many disasters, he's just, he's been five weeks away this, two disasters this season alone. And I asked him his professional opinion because he's seen the impact of hurricanes and storm events. And he felt that, and what he said was, this could be addressed with building code. So, I would, I mentioned this last time, I would encourage you to consider, I know you put a lot of time into this, but if you look at other communities and the way, the direction that they are going, for example, the Keys or up in the Panhandle, they're looking at increasing the building code to sustain bigger storm events due to, you know, warming season and that. The other thing I wanted to say is, I agree with Dale Abram that this is discriminatory. And so, I had a conversation after the last meeting with Ms. Gibson, and I said, so, and I don't make any bones about this, I don't like Oceana, the height, the height of the building. I said, well, what happens if that building sustained 50% damage? And she said, well, they would put in retainer walls, and it would go back up. And I said, well, it doesn't have that offset. So, if you're not treating one set of building the same as another one, and you have different ways that you deal with it, then that is discriminatory. So, I said to her, well, and she said to me, well, what would you do about the house that you could walk under the pool, you know, four feet under the pool? And so, that immediately says, you're talking about certain homeowners, and you're not talking about if a condo had the same kind of damage. And then that leads to the conclusion that this is discriminatory. I would encourage you to go back to the working table. I would encourage you to look at what other communities are doing, and look at, starting from a building code standpoint, because you can look at on Mexico Beach and see the few houses that are standing, they were built to much more discerning building code. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
I just wanted to let you know that we actually had many conversations with the city of Key West, especially about their strategies, and their strategies were to, this is also a zoning code, not a building code. The building code would be in a whole separate world. But part of Key West's strategy was to increase their height limitations so they could raise their buildings. So, they have concrete block buildings that are actually, concrete block houses on slab are being raised right now. So, it's, that's part of their strategy, and they actually did a ballot initiative to increase their height limitation, and it passed by an overwhelming amount, because the residents there know, they see the streets flood in the middle of the day, so raising their homes is a priority there. Secondly, if, it is not true that condos are also subject to this ordinance, it's the same, it applies to every property, so there's, the idea that this is discriminatory is just, it's ridiculous. This ordinance applies to everyone on the beach, east of A-1A. I would encourage you to look at the county's ordinance, since that's where you live, because their ordinance is actually a lot stronger than this one. So, you might want to go to the county commission if you're so upset about this, to see if they'll repeal theirs, because that's basically, that might be the more appropriate thing to do, since you live in the county. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Still open for public comment? Hearing no more public comment? Close the public comment portion. Bring it back to council. Further council comments?
I want to address to you, well, I guess I need to address the public. I'm going to address the statement that was made. The conversation that was had was not what was just reiterated. What I explained was that when there's a, that Oceana was built, and what we are concerned about on many different levels is, we don't want people armoring. So, when they know that the line is coming closer and closer to them, what they're going to do is, they're just going to build a wall around their beach, right? They're going to armor up in front of them, so they don't get the erosion, they don't get the foundation issues. And what will happen is, it'll road north and south of that condo. So, that's the explanation I was trying to explain to you on, I was trying to explain in the conversation. We're not, condos have to follow the same thing. It's a line that's drawn. Everybody has to fall under it, except for the variances, which is what we have tried to do to accommodate people that are in situations where they didn't have a total loss on their house, and maybe they can possibly rebuild by applying for a variance. But we can't keep having houses on these lines with the ocean coming in, and we are going to rebuild the sand, we're bringing the sand in, we're dumping it in, and we're redoing the dunes, which is, I support 100%, but at some point, something has to give. And I guess that's the plan here, is to go up and allow them to have a bigger footprint. And I'm just, no more conversations that are going to be misconstrued, just the way this is going to be.
I can tell you, Courtney and I have had probably more conversations, she wants to hear me, about building on stilts and looking at areas that have had major catastrophes, which is, this is only a portion of it. Building codes are another proportion of it. And look at the Keys. I was just there. You look at the areas that were hit directly by that storm, and there's areas that look like nothing happened to them. But you look at the houses in those areas, they're on stilts, they're built to today's code. Go to the Carolinas. Go to any area that's been hit by a storm in the last 20 years, major hurricane, they're definitely changing their building codes. We have talked about this.
But they're not taking land.
Excuse me, please do not interrupt. Thank you. So, Courtney and I have discussed that this is something that we need to continually to look at to make these building codes build on stilts where it's feasible and more sustainable community. So, the building codes, to me, are a different situation than this, so.
And John?
John, go ahead. I'd like to comment on the building code side of things. The problem we have is, we have a state code, so you can't just change the code. You know, it's a very arduous process that takes years, and it applies to the entire state of Florida. And yes, you could have a coastal element in for a building code, but it goes through so many committees that, if it does go through, it takes two, three years just to, for these things to cycle through. The chances are, you're not going to get what you asked for, especially if you're talking some site-specific. The best approach is the approach that we have taken, and that's to modify our zoning codes, where we do have control and we can make this change relatively quickly.
And the current, just to clarify, too, the current Florida building code that we have is pretty much based on Hurricane Andrew when it went through Miami area. Because the damage that was done, that's why the Florida building code was changed.
Right. It was actually the very first building code.
Exactly.
We had three, four codes that were floating around, and what they found when they went down and assessed the damage was that all these buildings were being built to different standards, and most of them to a subpar standard. The other thing I'd like to mention also, this could have been timed out, this book just came into its Florida Adaptation Planning Guidebook with a letter from Florida Department of Environmental Protection. We are actually listed in here, in one page in here. It's a phenomenal book, and it's for planners, but it talks about Florida pilot projects when it comes to adaptation pilot projects, and Satellite Beach was recognized in here as one of the reference tools for all planners to look at, and that was based on the work that we've done.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up. Any further counsel? I need, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1160 on second reading.
Motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Dino?
Yes. Motion passes to the staff. Everybody has worked together. Thank you very much. We've been going for now and then, does anybody need a break?
There is.
Okay, sounds great. Move on to Agenda Item 12, Ordinance Number 1168.
Ordinance Number 1168, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, allowing conditional use for a place of worship in light industrial zoning district for property located at 1227 South Patrick Drive, Perrin Regency Center, for units 111 and 120 only, the square footage of which is 3,121 square feet plus or minus, providing conditional use solely for the applicant church for the beach, providing for termination of conditional use upon vacation of units by church for the beach, providing for severability and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1168.
Thank you. Questions from council? Before I open up for public? This time, open up for public hearing on ordinance 1168, Agenda Item 12. Hearing no public comment? Bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 1168 on first reading.
I've got a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Gibson.
Yep.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Eric Dino?
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, Carl.
You did good, Carl. We should have taken him first.
Carl, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 13, Ordinance 1169. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1169, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriations of funds for the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. Ordinance Number 1141. Said ordinance is previously amended by ordinance Number 1162, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1169.
Thank you. Discussion?
I have a quick presentation, I promise. So, in front of you tonight is just the final budget amendment for our fiscal year 1718. Just a quick overview of kind of how we ended things. Does it work? So, total year-to-date revenues for the general fund is a little over $11,807,000. A total year-to-date expenditures, $11,698. So, that's going to end our fund balance for the general fund, a little over $795,000. 152 of that is non-spendable, what they consider the prepays, things that we pay for in September that don't actually happen until October. So, we are amending the general fund budget from 11/760 to 11/807. The community service fund, it is broken down to show you the total revenues and expenditures, and where the fund and where the fund balances would play out. Those little funds that we have, the recycling fund, Sampson's Island, beautification, the fire department's advanced life support, the police department's community service fund, and then, of course, the recreation trust fund. So we are going to amend their budget from $49,422 to $41,580. Stormwater had a total revenues of $501,478, total expenditures of $691,351. Stormwater fund's going to look a little funky, due to the fact that we have a lot of expenditures going out for the De Soto project, but we have grant money that is coming in, it's just not here yet, so it'll come into this next fiscal year. So that's why you see the negative balance for the fund balance. But that's one of the reasons why I have the little diagram there, so you guys can see that the De Soto, we have revenue coming in for that grant, the NEPC's grant, there's grant money coming in for that one. The NEP for the De Soto swales is coming in, and then, of course, we have the Stormwater Master Plan. So those are all products that are still currently going on, and those revenues will be coming in after we report those expenditures. The Community Redevelopment Trust Fund, total revenues of 1.739, total expenditures 1.608, ending fund balance of $488,759. As we talked previously in the earlier meeting, we talked about how we have the A1A Master Plan Streetscape to do still, the Phase Two of the Civic Center, and then we've had to reserve money because we haven't paid out the facade grant, which was in last year's budget as well. Capital Assets had 1.8 million in revenues, total expenditures 2.0, almost 2.3. As you may recall, we consolidated the property at Jackson Avenue and the 2014 fire truck. So we paid those loans off, but then we started the new loan to save a lot of interest. We had the air conditioner at DRS Center, which was an unbudgeted item, so that's why the expenditures are higher than we anticipated. Of course, the football field lighting, we had it budgeted, but it came in over budget, and then, of course, the solar panels. So we're going to be amending that budget from 1.4 to 2.298. You'll see that the fund balance for capital assets is going to have some of it that as we put across for the A1A improvements, but then we still have an unrestricted fund balance of 138. So those unbudgeted air conditioners, that's where that money's coming from. And then the health insurance fund, total revenues 1.487, total expenditures 1.469, ending fund balance is 155,566. And so we're amending that budget from 1.543 to 1.5. And just, we kind of know what's going on in this coming up fiscal year as we start it. We did end fiscal year 1718 in a much better place than I thought we were going to, so very excited about that. But we do have a lot of projects ahead. So we have the Civic Center Phase Two, the Stormwater Master Plan, Park Avenue improvements, A1A improvements, the beach access at Oceana. We do need to do a lot of city fleet upgrades, the new Public Works Building, the fire station, Jackson Avenue upgrades, seawall replacement, and the DRS Center facility improvement. So a lot of projects ahead, and I will be bringing you more as soon as we kind of get into this first quarter of the fiscal year and see how things shake out. Any questions?
Brittany, thank you very much. Questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1169 on the first reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Correct?
If I put some, it would sound like a question if I said it another way. I'm making a joke.
I understand that. So questions for Brittany?
There's no jokes after.
That's what I'm trying to.
Any questions?
I'm trying to talk.
Okay. Brittany, I'll open up for public comments. Public comment on agenda item 13. There are no public comment. Bring it back to council.
Thank you for making it easy.
Thank you.
Great job, Brittany.
Good job, Brittany. Any further comment? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Maripitino?
Yes, motion passes. Brittany, thank you very much, and thank you to your staff. Moving on to agenda item 14, discuss take action on a memorandum of understanding with AARP. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. You recall back in 2016, you all adopted a resolution to support the city's entry into World Health Organization's Age Friendly Cities and Communities Program, which included us engaging with the AARP to become part of their Age Friendly Communities Initiative. That initiative involves multiple phases. We've completed the application phase, which was step one. We're now in the planning phase. And to complete that, we were partnering with AARP to do a survey that's going to go out to all our residents. It was actually already publicized in the Beachcaster. But this particular agenda item is about the funding that AARP is willing to provide us that covers the cost of putting out that survey essentially. So just to talk through the structure briefly, it is targeted toward residents of the city age 50 or older. If we get other participants, it's okay, because that's going to help us as well, because we're talking about age-friendly initiatives, information that can help us cater to all ages, and that's part of the goal too. But essentially, we're going to do the survey electronically. Florida Today has already built it. It's out there. You can go on it if you follow that link, it's in the Beachcaster. But we're also going to get $3,000 from AARP to cover that cost, as well as incentivizing the survey completion. So there's going to be some advertisements that Florida Today will put out on our behalf to get people engaged in this. You can enter to win, you know, one of three $100 Amazon gift cards. That's all part of this, but that's all funded by AARP for this purpose. And so this item just really brings you the agreements that we have to have with AARP for the purpose of those funds. I'm working with the city attorney and them to just finalize a few things in the fairly simple agreement. And it'll be interesting to see, but our goal is to try to get several hundred people, if we can, filling out this survey. So we're going to, you know, reach out to folks within our group, our volunteers, our employees, ask them to fill it out, as well as try to get it out to as many residents as we possibly can. And one cool thing I think is worth mentioning is that Florida Today is doing something called geofencing, which I didn't really know much about until we went through this. And somehow, in all the world of technology, they are able to target people, kind of like the pop-up ads you get when you're on, you know, surfing the web. They're able to target people both through email and through advertisements based on where you live. So they have a way to isolate email addresses and people basically at computers, you know, in our zip code essentially. One of the questions does ask for clarification as to whether you actually live in the city or if you're in harbor or incorporated, so we hope to kind of focus in there a little bit more. But anyway, it's an interesting use of technology, and we'll see how the results go. But this will help us move into the next phases of the AARP Age Friendly Communities Initiative, which includes designing a plan for building programs that will support, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, which is be a place people can, you know, be born in, raise, live, enjoy their life, retire, and be safe and secure in their homes, you know, until, until the end, so.
Thank you. Questions?
Suzanne, good job. Thank you very much. Frank's old enough that he can have two surveys, right?
I second that.
We should do appropriations.
At this time, open up agenda item 14 for public comment. Here are none. Bring it back to council. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with AARP following the final approval of the memorandum of understanding by the city attorney.
Thank you. A motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Trying to get a few more of these in before you go.
I can get.
Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Maripitino?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda, item 15, regular city council meeting for November 21st, 2018, has been rescheduled for November 28th at 7:00 PM. Reason for that is it's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Help out with staff, okay? So it's my understanding that we'll certify the election on the 28th, and we'll get rid of Osmer on the 5th, right?
Yay.
Okay. Thank you. So that will be our agenda. Remember, just to let you guys know, because I know how much you guys like this, generally our dress code changes for the swearing-in ceremonies, okay?
Also, you can't wear flip flops.
Yeah, I gotta take my flip flops. I'll wear socks that night.
You're gonna wear socks.
Okay.
Enclosed house shoes.
All right. Moving on to agenda item 16, appointments to boards. We have a few applicants here. We have Mike Chase, who is on a board but would like to serve on another. Lori Hayes for the library board, in previous interview, and tonight Brent Winty for the pension, excuse me, the pension planning board of trustees, plan board of trustees. So those are people that we have. I think the board of adjustment does have a number, has an alternate there.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Chase as an alternate member of the board of adjustment.
You want to do one?
Sure. And I'll make the motion also to appoint Lori Hayes to the library board, and Brent Winty to the pension plan board of trustees for both the general employees and the police and fire.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, excuse me, Montanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Yes?
Really quick question. On the memo, it identifies that the alternate members of the library board were willing to serve as primary members. What position are you wanting to do for Ms. Hayes?
So we're looking at...
Are you wanting to shift an alternate member up and then, you know, you normally consider the primary members? At the last meeting for this discussion, I was asked to poll them to see if they would be willing to serve as primary members.
And?
And they were both willing to. So it's according to what your wishes are.
All right. I'll amend my motion to appoint Margie Soliday as a regular member and Lori Haynes as an alternate.
Thank you.
You have, it would either be Arlene Massey or Mary Ann Reese for the alternate.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm looking at the library board. You have the library board here. You have the alternates are Pat Anderson, or Pat Patterson and Margie Soliday for the library board.
Who's the next one?
This is what I have on my packet.
This is because it was through this time period.
No, it's the attendance, okay.
Now you see.
And they're still there.
Well, she's supposed to be a regular member. They have not had a meeting where she's a regular member at this time.
I'm confused.
Yeah. Well, this is the actual current appointment. So Soliday was moved up.
She's already a primary member.
In August.
Okay, so all we need is the...
So we need to appoint...
They have not yet. They have maybe in September.
We need to appoint one of these two people.
Exactly, yes.
All right. I'll make the motion that...
You amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to appoint Arlene Massey as the primary member and bring on Lori Haynes as a new alternate.
Great. Thank you. Also...
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't mind second.
Okay. Everybody good? Any discussion?
And can we, if we're going to do this like this, and we don't have the information like this, can you put in, in where it says the applicants?
Put the...
Somebody, someplace over here on this page where who's what, because it makes it a lot easier.
Thank you.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Maripitino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.